The city council meeting. We're going to move right into proclamation presented to Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, Recognize 2019 National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Okay. Whereas every day, 100 people are killed and the lives of countless others are injured as a result of gun violence. Firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and teens. Persons with access to a gun have a three times greater risk of death by suicide. Protecting public safety within our community is one of the highest priorities of the mayor of Asbury Park and City Council and our local law enforcement. June is the birth month of Hadia Pendleton, a talented young lady whose life was tragically cut short one week after performing at President Obama's second inaugural parade in 2013. A national coalition designated the first weekend in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Weekend to help honor Hadia and countless others who've lost their lives or who have been injured due to gun violence. This annual commemoration and awareness event has inspired by Hadia's friends who chose to wear orange since it is the color hunters use and it symbolizes the value of human life. The mayor and council encourage all residents to wear orange during the weekend of June 7th to the 9th to signify their solidarity in raising awareness and to honor the lives lost and stolen human potential of members of our community and nation due to gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council hereby honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence by declaring June 7th to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you. Do you want to do a picture or ever say something first?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Moore and Asbury Park City Council for giving me the time to speak about declaring National Gun Violence Awareness Day. My name is Lisa Iannucci. I'm a resident of Ocean Grove, right down the street, and a member of the Monmouth County Group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Much like Mothers Against Drunk Driving, Moms Demand Action is a nonpartisan grassroots movement begun right after the Newtown School shooting in 2012. While we fully support the right of law-abiding citizens to own firearms, our goal is to reduce the 36,000 deaths every year through sensible legislation, raising awareness, and by promoting gun safety. I sincerely thank you for announcing this proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Asbury Park. I invite everyone who agrees that we can do more to save American lives from gun violence to wear orange on June 7th to help spread the word about the importance of remembering and honoring all victims of gun violence. We also invite you and your families to attend our Community Day of Action, which is Saturday, June 8th, from 11:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. at Liberty Park Community Garden in Neptune Township. I have more information about the event and Moms Demand Action, and I will leave that with you. So, thank you very much. And now I would just like to take a picture with everybody.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll move into City Manager's Report on Issues Raised at Prior Council Meeting. Special events. Lisa.
The first application before you is the Praising the Park Victory Celebration. This was originally to be held on May 5th, but due to the bad weather, they rescheduled it for June 2nd. This will be the rally and the celebration in Springwood Park. Next is the Pulse Night Club Remembrance, which will be held on June 12th in Library Square Park. V and A's Community Day 2019 on June 13th. And lastly, the VFW Memorial Day Service on Memorial Day. And we have One Wedding on September 7th of Fifth Avenue Beach. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Review of tonight's agenda.
Resolution 2019-182 is the special event applications. Resolution 2019-183 is the appointments to the Asbury Park PV Committee. Resolution 2019-184 is a resolution to credit sewer account 806-16, which is 4th Avenue A. 185 is authorizing the tax collector to prepare and deliver the estimated 2019 third-quarter tax bills. We do not know if we need to do an estimated tax bill. It depends on the state budget, but we would like the authority, if we have to, to do it. 186 is a technical item. It is a special item of revenue. It's a Chapter 159 for the School Resource Officer. The school reimburses us for the SROs, and this allows us to account for it in the budget. Resolution 2019-187 is an RCA for 1114 Fourth Avenue. And Resolution 2019-188 is a proposal for a grant application for the Department of Justice, the School Violence Prevention Program, which we will be applying proposed trailers for the Police Department. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, I'm going to move on to the individual resolutions. 189 is the payment of bills. 190 is the employment agreement for the city manager. 191 is professional services for the Rogers Group for Police Accreditation. That's the maintenance of the existing accreditation and various training modules as per AG guidelines. 192 is authorizing Clark Caden Hints to perform various actions as professional services from the master plan. After the master plan reexamination report was completed, the planning board created a subcommittee and identified high important, high priority items. This addresses a lot of the high priority items. Moving forward, we hope administratively to be able to recommend that we do this on an annual basis to keep the master plan actions and implementation items fresh to continue moving forward. Resolution 193 is a contract for improvement to Del Lake Drive. This was publicly bid. The recommendation is in the packet. This is for also, if you recall, the bond ordinance to increase the cost. This does Del Lake Drive, as we've discussed. 194 and 195 are capital purchases from the capital ordinance, various IT equipment and SUV for code enforcement. This will replace a code enforcement car that we need to get rid of. There's a hole in the floor and one of the windows doesn't work. 196 is an extension for Revenue Guard for Emergency Medical Services. This was bid a few years ago. The city has seen an increase in revenue from Revenue Guard. This is for third-party billing of EMS activities. 197 is an agreement with Park Mobile, which is, costs the city nothing, for a mobile parking application. This will be a supplement to the existing mobile parking app we have. This is an effort to increase customer service and improve the customer experience with the city. It doesn't replace what you have now, but Park Mobile is in various other municipalities around the country. It is a national app and will allow us to continue, if you have this app when you come into Asbury, you'll be able to utilize it. So, we're trying to improve the customer experience through free apps such as the Park Mobile one. Resolution 2018 is to grant a revocable license for 1112 and 1114 Main Street and to execute said license. Is there any questions on the individual resolutions?
And that last one, 198, has to do with ARBAR, and it deals with the airspace, and it was the subject matter that Michelle Alonso presented during the work session at the last council meeting.
Moving on to ordinances, 2019-22, we're requesting a tabling of it. And 2019-23 is the plastic bag ordinance, which Mr. Raffetto can go into the process if he wishes.
Yes, so as you'll recall, you introduced the plastic bag ordinance at the last council meeting. At the time, Cindy announced that the public hearing and second reading was scheduled not for tonight, but for two weeks from now. In the meantime, Councilwoman Clayton had contacted us with a request to possibly incorporate an additional provision into the ordinance that would place a maximum amount that a merchant or street vendor could charge for provision of single-use paper bags. In the initial ordinance that was introduced at the last council meeting, essentially, single-use plastic carryout bags are banned, but merchants and street vendors can sell to the consumer single-use paper bags as well as recyclable bags for a minimum fee of 10 cents per bag, but there was no maximum. So, the request was that you consider putting a maximum amount that can be charged for the single-use paper bags. No maximum amount, however, with regard to the recyclable bags, because they would be whatever the market rate is. That is something, since it would incorporate a new fee into the ordinance that substantially amends the ordinance that you introduced at the last council meeting. So, the suggestion was that we bring this forward for your consideration tonight on first reading, and if you're amenable to the ordinance as revised, you introduce the new ordinance this evening, which will have a separate ordinance number from the one you introduced at the last meeting, that in order to try to stick to the same schedule that you had at the last meeting, that instead of skipping a meeting in between, that the second reading and public hearing would be scheduled for the next council meeting, and that you would simply instruct Cindy to withdraw the prior version that you introduced at the last meeting, which is ordinance number 20.
Yep. All right. Anything else, City Managers?
Nope.
Matters by City Council?
Well, yes. We have very good news that the city has been awarded a grant, the Safe Foods School Grant. And what that's going to do is provide traffic calming on both 3rd and 4th avenues. So, there will be six mini roundabouts that will help to slow down the flow of traffic and discourage commercial traffic on those avenues. New bike lanes on 3rd Avenue and upgrade of traffic signal on 3rd and 5th. Also, this weekend is Memorial Day Carnival in Bradley Park. It's for families, rides, games, food. It's an opportunity to come out and enjoy the Memorial Day weekend. And to everybody, have a wonderful holiday.
I just want to take the time and opportunity to thank everyone that was involved in our autism program. It was outstanding. We had children, adults, and everybody was happy. Numerous telephone calls, thanking the city of Asbury Park. I'd like to just thank the council for your support, the city manager, the recreation committee, DPW, and the police officers. I think without this whole group, it never went off. So, we're looking forward to doing a lot more things this summer, starting with the recreation, the summer day camp. And sign up if you know anyone or any children or family member there. They can come to Lisa at the city hall and sign up for that. We also have the junior councils. So, if you know anyone, the age is, I forget the age limit, but when they come down to city hall, they can sign up to be junior councils, and that's what we need. Thank you.
So, I want to thank everybody who came out for the business meeting on Monday night. We had a really great crowd and I thought a productive night with a lot of conversation on some things we knew and some things we didn't, parking or disorderlies late at night. So, everybody who came out to that, thank you. In our endless attempt to help with the parking issues in the downtown, we've finally gotten the Bangs Ave Lot fully staffed for Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. That has been really hard, so we want to thank Michael Manzella for making that happen. We've also increased the number of spaces in the Bangs Ave Lot by, would it be fair to say double? Double. So, the hours right now for public parking in the Bangs Ave Lot are Friday, 6:00 to midnight, Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to midnight, and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to midnight, and this will be all summer. So, we really want to stress to people, you know, to park in that lot, you know, potentially get off the streets, employees as well. Can they park in that lot? Yeah. So, really excited about the increased hours in the Bangs Ave Lot. The Asbury Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission has, under the leadership of Tom Pavinsky, who does an amazing job, has created a new heart-shaped garden on the southwest plot of Kennedy Park on Lake Gav. This garden is to honor our pets that have passed on. If somebody is interested in having a perennial flower planted in memory of his or her pet, please write your check to the Friends of the Asbury Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission, and that can be mailed to 1607 Emory Ave, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Or quite frankly, you could email any one of us, and we'll get you in touch with Tom to buy your perennial plant for your pet that has passed. And last, June 12th is the anniversary of the Pulse nightclub shooting. So, if we remember, 49 people were killed and 53 were wounded. As a result of that, we had a group of volunteers organize to put together a sea of trees in remembrance of the 49 victims in Library Park. That is a result of a number of locals, but one local that I'm going to specifically call out is Ryan from The Tides and the Asbury Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission. So, on June 12th, because we do it on the same day every year, from 7:00 to 8:00, we will be doing a very short remembrance ceremony again at Library Park, and then walking through and taking a look at the trees that are doing, I think, really great. So, we should all mark your calendars for June 12th from 7:00 to 8:00 in Library Park.
I just want to say what's already been said. I wish everybody safe and happy Memorial Day, and please try to remember what this special day means. It's a day to remember the people that made the ultimate sacrifice for this country, men, women, everybody. So, it's a special day. We all party, we all have barbecues, but try to remember what it's about. Thank you.
Matters by the City Manager?
None at this time.
Matters by the City Attorney?
None at this time.
At this time, we'll break until 7:00 p.m. Good evening. I want to call to order the council meeting of the city of Asbury Park. Local Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flag salute.
Flag allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press. The co-star Mr. Ledger on January 2nd, 2019, posted on a bulletin board the same day. All notices are filed with the city clerk. Come a motion to open the meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Second.
On favor? Hi. All opposed. Each member of the public has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ernest Mingoli, 400 Del Lake Drive, Apartment 5B, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So, I understand from the website today, contrary to my pleadings over the last four, five years, renewing the city manager's contract, which, that's your decision. The other thing, just to realize, I hope the public understands that in Asbury, under this Faulkner system, the city manager is above everyone. He's above the police chief, the fire chief, the mayor, the council, you know? And I don't know how you justify this. At meetings, the city manager says, "There's no lawsuits in Asbury Park." Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? I mean, the mayor had one. A lot of other people have them. And then he feels he could castigate people in public. At last night's meeting, he says, "Oh, Mingoli has 10." Where does he come off doing this? And how does the city attorney, Ansel Grimm, allow him to mouth off like that? I'll tell you why. Because Ansel Grimm Aaron in Asbury and Long Branch has been famous for causing litigation between residents, between the government, between the police, the firemen, et cetera. They make a fortune on litigation. Now, I understand you're attaching to the manager's new contract a clause that he gets all the legal, he needs it. That's one thing I wouldn't complain about. That city manager needs it, okay? Now, he can stand behind nothing. Every meeting I go to, he gives a different resume. Last night, we're at that, was it last night or Monday? Which one was the one with the?
Monday night.
Monday night, with the business people, right? So, now, city manager, you know, and they're complaining about crime and problems. He says, "Well, I have degrees in criminal justice." Okay. Now, you go back a few months, we're talking about development and other things. He's telling the crap. "I have degrees in public admin." How many degrees does Mr. Capobianco have? I mean, I have a couple, but how many does he have? And every time he espouses this expertise, remember about housing set aside? "I've done many communities, housing set aside, low income." I says, "How many?" He says, "Well, let's see, Milburn, Little Ferry." Well, that's not many. And these are not low-income communities. So, look, you renew the contract, it's on you. I'm a homeowner here. I'm getting belted with taxes. Look at last night at the school board. Taxes, taxes on the worst school system in the state.
Thank you.
You know where I'm going right there?
Long Branch?
Yes.
Drive careful.
Hi, it's Madeline Monaco, Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. First, I want to thank you for paving Sunset Avenue at Main Street. It's causing, it used to cause a lot of accidents there, so thank you very much for doing that paving. I have a number of comments that I'm going to make, so I'm going to read the statement to stay within my time. I'd like to acknowledge that Save Asbury's Waterfront is waiting for a response to an email that I sent to the city council dated April 25th, 2019, where we requested that I-STAR not be allowed to present their oceanfront beach club plans to the planning board until we receive definitive responses to requests, some of which we have been asking about for nearly six months. In my email, we requested the city's redevelopment attorney, Joe Marazidi, investigate and provide definitive answers to questions about whether or not the land on the ocean side of Ocean Avenue between 6th and 7th avenues was under Green Acres jurisdiction when the land was sold to Asbury Partners LLC. Our understanding is that if the land was under Green Acres jurisdiction, Green Acres would have needed to formally approve the land for sale and development. The Green Acres designation has direct bearing on whether or not the land can be developed at all. We also requested an investigation into the option of the city of Asbury Park obtaining via eminent domain the property where the pool club is planned, as well as the parcel of land known as Bradley Cove. Lots of residents and small business properties in the waterfront zone have been taken by eminent domain. Why not take a piece of land where development is so highly contested by nearly 6,400 citizens of and visitors to our popular Asbury Park? Citizens of Asbury Park want a beach and boardwalk for all. They want the parcel of land in question to be preserved as a public park-like area. We are not opposed to development in Asbury Park, but we stand firm against further development on the waterfront that is elitist, unbalanced, and ignores environmental and social justice concerns. With respect to environmental impact, the CAFRA permit that authorizes construction was issued in 2004 and relies on FEMA flood maps dated 1983. According to more recent FEMA flood maps from 2006 and 2014, the property has been classified as a VE zone, the most vulnerable flood zone that is also subject to high-velocity water. Concrete and other impervious surfaces planned for the pool club will likely contribute to flooding and stormwater management problems during storms because there is nowhere for the water to be absorbed. The memberships for this pool club will be expensive and unaffordable for the majority of Asbury Park residents and visitors. Nearly half of Asbury Park residents are at or below the poverty level, and only an elite population of mostly seasonal visitors will join the club. Asbury Park has always had a uniquely diverse vibe that is a main attraction for residents who live here and for visitors. I'm almost done. Music, art, and culture are our heritage and lifeblood, and the lead pool club represents bland elitism and does not fit with our culture. We strongly suggest someone from the Public Arts Commission also be added to the planning board in time for the pool club review. And we're just asking that these questions and concerns be answered before this plan is reviewed by the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers Sewell. I was just at an event yesterday, and I shared it with the mayor. We are being looked at by quite a few people. Ray Chambers, former owner of the New Jersey Nets, a person I've known for a couple of years. He talked about them talking at their board meeting about Asbury and being an exclusive community, bringing people together, and they want to reflect that in Newark. And they're talking and even looking to come down and look at what's going on, to talk about those type of things. So, we can be the model of a lot of things going on. We just need to, remember to communicate that. We have some issues. The council and I are working on some things with the RCA. Also, we haven't gotten any word on this valet, I don't know what it's called, a valet service for the new hotel, and what is it going to do? I mean, is it intruding on a public beach for the elite? The parking meeting, which I wasn't at Monday, I want to throw my support behind the business owners and let them know that citizens also understand that we need to come together as a community to come up with a parking solution that's going to benefit them and also continue to make this an attractive destination for tourism in the city and state. So, we all have to sit down, we all have to be at the table, and we all need to be there to talk about what's going on. Also, I know the city manager's contract is up and being reviewed for discussion. And I just want the city manager to know that the community is here on a regular basis doing things outside their time and preview to help improve the city, and their voices should be heard in anything that goes on. And the relationship with this city has to be a communication between all. We are all, some of us got here by accident, some of us born here, some of the people that were born here, some of the people that came, you know, because they wanted to, because they heard about what Asbury Park was looking at. And just remember, we're all in this same boat right now, and we need to remember that. If we want to get to where we're going, I don't like getting a place by accident. I want to get there planned. So, we need to look at these options and talk about things that we need to address so we can be the model city of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
The valet, it's...
Are you talking about the valet the city's doing in the downtown to relieve some of the parking issues or?
It's the concierge service through the hotel. I talked to Brian of I-STAR yesterday. They still don't know how it's going to work. They have no plans for it. They haven't bought any equipment. There's, it's an empty slate right now. They have nothing.
So, they advertise it as something, but...
More than likely, at the end of the day, it's my guess that you call from your room, someone gets your stuff, brings it to the beach. That's...
But you're walking onto the beach.
And you're paying a beach, you're paying. You have to get a beach pass.
Not a worker?
They would have to, yeah.
Not given a free ticket?
Yeah, there's nothing free.
And can we determine, can we obligate someone to have commerce on the beach? Because that is commerce, walking down, and because they're facilitated with an entity and working on our beach, does that need?
As long as they have a beach pass, there's nothing that will prevent someone from paying someone else to put up a chair or an umbrella for them.
Just, so, I can just walk on people's property? You know, it's just a...
I mean, this is...
It's actually a business. There, there, there. What are you doing?
But it's an adjunct of the hotel.
Exactly.
It's not a separate business that they're setting up shop to put up tables and chairs and umbrellas on the beach. They work for the hotel, and they're just putting a chair up for somebody as part of the amenities that are associated with the fee they're paying for the room and whatnot at the hotel.
It's part of the business. It's not even on to our property.
It wouldn't fall under the concession laws of the local public contracts law. So, when we bid out for, what's his name?
The beach chairs and umbrella concession that Mr. Pimco has on the public beaches.
That's a concession, and since it's public property, under the concession law, we can't stop that. It's public land. It's the same thing as someone put a chair at Springwood Avenue Park. We have no control if one person does it. And Brian has said he doesn't think this is gonna be more than three to five people. It, the, the perception seems to be that there's, it's gonna be like Miami, where each hotel has its own, like, color stamp. That is not Brian's intent. He's said that. He doesn't think it's gonna be many people. The control would be in a concession bid, which doesn't fall under this. So, until we actually get something, it's still a guess. But Brian said it's not gonna look like Miami Beach with thirty different, like, green for Hilton and Marriott red. It's not that.
And there's no reserved area. The entire beach is public. There's no reserved area for the hotel.
They're never moving.
I think we talked about, though, look, ensuring that we weren't creating space that looked private.
Right.
And, and while I appreciate what you're saying, as somebody who goes down and sets up at nine on Fifth Ave, which I absolutely do, um, and then go back down around 11:00, um, we wouldn't want to s... I, I appreciate Tracy's point that we would be mindful that we were not creating space that felt private.
Correct.
Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I happened to attend a school board meeting last night. I think there's more politics in that room than there is here. And they talked about the shortfall. I'd like to know more about it, if possible. Now, when we have the pilot programs on, all over the city, I don't know which ones, I guess the beachfront ones, do we, when we get ninety-five percent, we don't pay school tax. Where does the school tax money go? It's one of my questions, because that came up last night. The other thing I wanted to talk about was zoning. I mean, like, I have a structure going on in the property behind my house. It's a real house. It's going in the backyard. And when you call up the zoning officer, she tells you it's gonna be a shed. Now, it's fifteen feet tall. It's a beach house. I mean, like, we have to get control of this department. They can't, I called, uh, George. He didn't know anything about it. He went out and looked at it. He's the construction official. They've been hammering for a week, and he doesn't know about it? Putting in electricity, putting in plumbing, and he doesn't know about it? I mean, like, and something's gotta be done about these things. Can't have a structure going on with nobody knowing if it's by the, on the property line or off the property line. I have enough trouble with my neighbor, but aside from that, now the house behind me is building something. I mean, like, and he said they got a full approval. How do they get full approval to build something like that without going before the planning board or the zoning board or whatever board? I don't get it. Michael, I, I heard you're in charge of that department right now.
No.
No?
Michelle is.
That's what they said.
Michelle is. She's right there. She'll talk to you when you're finished.
All right, but, uh, I'm very interested in knowing how the ninety-five percent of the pilot programs, I mean, which part, how much of it was school money that we didn't give the school? I mean, you have to get together with those people. They don't know what they're doing neither. I mean, you have to, uh, have a meeting with them. We're one little team. I mean, they don't meet with you, you don't meet with them. I mean, like, you know, they're part of the community. You gotta meet with them and talk to them. They have so many administrators sitting there. I can't believe it. And one of the salaries that was on their bill resolution was to pay a student teacher forty-one dollars an hour. I mean, huh? I, I mean, forty-one dollars an hour, I was like, what? I said, "Maybe I read it wrong." Could you believe it, a, a person that's not a graduate yet? Is it gonna student teach? That used to be something they did. But, I mean, like, you gotta look into these things. You gotta make sure that that school's running right.
Okay.
And I mean, I really do. You have a lot on your plate, but that's, you gotta take that up. Because I don't think anybody knows they're gonna get an added assessment in the coming months.
What was the word you used at the beginning? You said you went to the Board of Education meeting, there was what?
What?
A, a word you said...
I think she meant shortfall.
A shortfall.
Yeah. The school has a shortfall, right? Or they're not getting the money they thought they were gonna get?
Well, no, they're getting the money they knew they were gonna get. S2, which was a new bill passed last year, told Asbury Park School System, which is a separate body from us, we have no say over them. Some towns appoint schools, boards. This is a duly-elected school board by you and everybody else, and they make their decisions. We have no say over the decisions. We have met with them, we've made suggestions to them, and we have a good working relationship with them. As far as the ninety-five percent, we go back to, like, forget the pilots. Again, we have given no pilots since S2 was passed. The majority of the pilots were given before any of us were up on this council. And the recent pilots have helped them immensely as far as, like, the Asbury has drawn in more, where your house is going up, like, say, fifty thousand dollars. My house is going up fifty thousand dollars. So, you add all those fifty thousand dollars up, that's money they are getting. Okay, so they're not getting any of the ninety-five percent. But state law says the Board of Education sets what they need to raise, and we have to fund it. And we will fund it, whatever they say they need to raise. Where it comes from, if it comes from regular taxes, pilots, or anything, to me, it doesn't make any difference. We have to legally fund it, and we will fund it. So, whatever their budget is, and how they decide on their budget, is their...
Well, I asked them...
Their game, their game, not ours, and we will fund it.
I'll tell ya, I asked them what their plan was. They don't, they don't seem to have a plan. They said they sent out pink slips. They do that every year, anyway.
Okay, well, I hope you're as vocal at the board meetings as you are here.
I want you to stay on top of it, because we don't need an added assessment.
Thank you, Rita. Bye.
Maggie Quentin, North Beach. And just from the previous speaker, which I wasn't going to say anything, but with this idea of this beach club putting, um, their own chairs and umbrellas and stuff like that, every beach club that I've ever seen does that. They put out a whole bunch of chairs, umbrellas, and make the space in front of their place theirs, which is something. And if, um, I-Star does have the right to do this, which they might have, to do a beach club, I would ask that you do not give them a variance on anything else. And so, the whole idea of music, food, second floor with an elevator, anything like that, if you could just please keep it in mind, we don't have to give them all of that. If they have the right to have a pool, give them the pool. One level, like in Allenhurst or Deal, one level, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and we're in agreement with you. We haven't hammered down all the particulars, but again, as Michael said, talk to Mr. Sharipka. That is not their intention. They know it will never be a private beach, and we will guarantee you there will never be a private beach. And they're not gonna go out there at six o'clock in the morning and set up thirty chairs. We'll take 'em down.
So, I, I'm sure that's not their intention, you know, intention schmenenshens. Can we have something in writing, though? I, I appreciate Brian, Brian verbally saying that, but I would love it not just verbal.
Also, the noise, but then you have, um, Ankers Bend. You have the Berkeley now doing music all the time at their... I mean, you, you just have noise all around at all the time. So, I would say use this opportunity to curtail what they can do. And if they have the right to do this, which is something from a long time ago, and not be left in today, they have the right to do it. We have to live with it, but let's not give them everything in common.
Agreed. And again, any noise problems, be it Anchors Bend, be it the Stone Pony, be it Brick Wall, be it, uh, anywhere. Unless we get complaints, we cannot do anything. So, if the, the more complaints, where a couple of years ago, when they opened the Asbury Hotel, there was all types of complaints. And the city said, "Correct it, or else we're gonna shut you down." They corrected it. So, if there's noise complaints, be it from the Berkeley or anybody else, please call in. Because Amy and Eileen are on, like, the, I'm gonna...
Liquor license committee.
Liquor license renewal committee. And when we go to renew their liquor licenses next month, if, like, John Moore's Bar, well, he's got no complaints, it's gonna be approved. But fifty people didn't call and complain about John Moore's Bar, or else it wouldn't be approved. So, any, any noise complaints, please call in, right to the police department. Not to 911, to the 774-1300 number. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, Grand Am, Asbury Park. Uh, the streets are looking better. Um, I don't know if you need to call the state on a couple of items, such as the raised manhole covers, especially on Eighth Avenue and Seventh. They're pretty high, and when you turn on to Seventh Avenue, there's another one, and it's not all that great. Um, I was behind a sweeps, a street sweeper the other day, and coming home from mass at seven o'clock in the morning, and I'm thinking, "Oh, this is gonna be lovely." 'Cause as he's sweeping the road, he has to swing out in front of me, which I'm in the lane because of your bumpouts that we weren't supposed to have. But we have 'em. And I can only imagine what's gonna happen when we get the snow. But that's another issue. Other than that, they're starting to shape up a little bit, but I wish we could just have no winter, and we would be okay. Now, the other thing is, I think it was that day, or one of the days, early in the morning, there was a possum dead in the road, which kinda like gets me crazy. And as I was, before the road was completed, there was a lot of potholes on Seventh. So, I did call Public Works, and I must say, before the morning was over, the possum was gone, and they, they miraculously plugged up all those potholes. So, kudos to them. I called them up, and I told them I appreciated their, their quick response, and they were very grateful. Um, I guess that's it. But those roads have me a little worried, big time. So, I don't know if you have to call the state on them or what.
Okay, and I know what Louise is talking about. Like, the manhole covers are still raised an inch or two. Is that because the final base coat's not down?
That's right. So, next, next month, it's on Asbury Ave, the final paper.
There we go. Next month, the final base coat north of Asbury Ave will be laid. So, those manholes are raised right now, but when they put the final layer of asphalt, it'll be leveled.
Thank you, Louise.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, um, Asbury Park. So, this might be crazy. Um, again, this is about the beach club. But this is just my thought out of a long-time resident at Asbury Park. In this beach club, or in the city of Asbury Park, has it ever been mentioned about sports gambling, or gambling of any sort? I know we've met a couple of times with Atlantic City. I know it's just got approved over, and, you know, um, Lawn Branch. I know previous, there were previous, um, you know, petitions to the city. I, I believe the last one I remember was in, um, I was a senior in high school, so I guess it was twenty years ago. Um, so, I'm questioning, because I still don't... All the fuss of, um, the beach club doesn't seem price-effective to me. Um, but, you know, my mastermind theory, you know, pinky kinda thought, is, um, gambling and all-season alcohol and parties, um, in some sort. So, um, and if it's no, 'cause hopefully it is no, can we get that in writing so it doesn't pop up in the future? Because, again, I remember this proposal years ago.
That's it?
That's it.
So, I think I've missed a couple of words at the beginning. So, you wanna know if there's gonna be legalized gambling at the beach club? No.
Or anywhere in Asbury?
No. Just, I would love it. The state of New Jersey says no.
Okay, 'cause I...
That's a state issue, not a city issue, where the state can only grant so many licenses. And even when they gave it to Monmouth Park, and they gave it to the Meadowlands as far as the William Hill, uh, off-track betting and everything, they had to be so many miles apart and everything.
So, if there...
If I was a betting person, which I am, there will never be legalized gambling in Asbury Park.
But if there is, if there's some...
But I'm the one who told you not to bet on the twenty-horse in the Kentucky Derby. The horse won and paid a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
But if in the future this absolutely pops up, 'cause my friends think I'm absolutely crazy. I said, but, you know, if it ever pops up again...
Many, many years ago, previous mayors and councils, be it Ray Kramer and everything, tried to get high lie in Asbury Park to bring back the city, and it was turned down. So, again, Atlantic City is the king of New Jersey, and they're not gonna let gambling go anyplace else. And they got hundreds of millions of dollars, the lobbying money, it's a profanity.
So, it's a no?
It's a no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Leahy, Fifth Avenue. Um, I wanted to, like, speak about something that's very important to me. Um, it's the pesticides that a lot of people are using, or their gardeners are using on their lawns. I have, uh, five copies of some papers I would like you to read when you have the time, um, that they're causing cancer. Uh, a couple in California just sued Bayer Monsanto for billions of dollars because they had been using Roundup for thirty years, and they both got cancer. So, I think it's time that a lot of people around here stop using that stuff. It's washing into the lakes. Um, the people down by, uh, probably I-Star were spraying it the other day, right down in front of the tower, where people walk their dogs all the time. And then they go to the dog park. So, it really should be banned here. I don't think that a lot of people realize how serious it is. So, anyway, I would appreciate it if you could all read these, and, um, then maybe we can talk about it another time. Um, the other thing is, um, entertainment. I know Eileen does, um, a lot with the entertainment here. Would anybody be interested in a bluegrass band? Because I know someone who has one that's very good. It's a very good band, and a lot of people do like bluegrass. Oh, good. And the other thing is, um, I just went to, uh, an, an event last week at my church, and they had this, um, Coney Island music. It's an organ that this man takes around to all different places. And it's just wonderful. I mean, it would sound great on one of the events down here, if you could get him. And I have his card. So, anyway, that's on the brighter side. And I guess that's about it.
Thanks, Linda. I'll hook up with you and get some contact information from you.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Jen Sparrow, Second Ave. I'm putting in an early bid for the Parklet in front of Words Bookstore this summer. I think we could have some great storytime in there. And, uh, you know, I'm a big supporter of that, so if it's available, Words Bookstore would like it. Secondly, I want to thank, um, Michael, city manager, and the city council, and Mike Manzella, and everybody who came out on Monday for the, uh, business owners' meeting. This room was full. It was well-represented. And I would like to say that, that, that we heard so many excellent reports. First of all, parking. There were a lot of things that were said at that meeting about some of the creative solutions that are in the works for parking that people are really excited by. So, what it said to us, those of us that have talked afterwards, is that the city really is working hard to figure this out. We all know it's a challenge. And I think one of the things that came out of it was, people had a lot of great ideas at the meeting. What we also experienced was the city council, Michael, the city manager, Mike, the transportation person. Everyone's talking about it. It isn't like they're ignoring the fact that parking's a challenge. They're really working at coming up with some really creative solutions. So, it felt like the, there was a lot of, um, collaboration around the whole concept of how the business owners and the citizens of Asbury Park could work and communicate. So, I would really like to thank, you know, it's 6:30 at night on a Monday, but all the members of the council... but all the members of the council were here, all the members of the city government were here, the police were here, the fire chief was here. And it felt as though there was a real collaboration around how to make everything better or continue to make it better, because it's really much better than it was 11 years ago. I can tell you that for sure, to really continue to make it better. So thank you so much. There was a suggestion that we do it once in a while, and I hope that we can because I think it really brought a lot of us together. And the information was fantastic. So maybe more of it in the newsletter. I don't know which newsletter is fantastic. But it was a really good communication moment for everyone in the city. So thank you, thank you. And thank you for all your creative thoughts around how we're gonna make this place better. They talked a lot about the guest experience here in Asbury Park and how they're really trying hard to figure out, excuse me, allergies, how to make this a better place for everyone that comes to town. So maybe we'll do it again, but thank you, thank you for that event. It was fantastic.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maureen Nevin-Delaye Court. Speaking of parking, I guess everybody saw the report today in the paper about the 30,162 parking tickets that we issued from, this was back in 2016 to June of 2017. And, yeah, so it's actually, actually it says 32,438. This is NJ.com's research that I'm quoting now. And it, given the size of our town and the number of tickets that were issued, it's like three times any other of the 44 towns that they posted the results on. And I wanted to ask about what our current situation is as far as, what do we require of builders or other people who are going to have attractions that are going to bring people in? We used to have a one and a half space for every unit, the new unit that someone would put in of parking so that there was some sort of a ratio. I thought at one point that we did away with that ratio, so I wanted to clarify that. And, you know, if you could elaborate on some of the ideas that came out of that meeting that Jan just referred to, that would be helpful, I think. And I, I just read quickly this proposal for professional planning services for revisions to Chapter 30, Land Develop Inordinates, to implement the 2017 master plan. I'd wanna know if we had any land use legal advice on this as opposed to just the, the planning firm, Caton, Clark Caton Hints. And that's my questions for tonight.
Michael, take the last one first.
We actually, during the fair and open process earlier this year, the city has an agreement with a land use attorney, Yolanta-
Who is the?
Maziaris. Yolanta Maziaris, she works at a firm out of Summit. So yes, the city has a specific land use attorney on board.
Are there suggestions, is that attorney's suggestions included in here?
No, they wouldn't have anything to do with the proposal.
What?
They don't have anything to do with the proposal.
But I'm talking about the advice. Who was our advisor from land use expertise on this?
To do that, that's just a proposal from Clark Caton Hints to do act, implementation action.
It's always, it's what they would like us to do.
Excuse me?
You haven't agreed to it yet. This is just a proposal from them as to what they would like to see?
No, that's for what the planning board, city staff, and once the city council hopefully approves it, what they wanna see. In the master plan reexamination report, there were implementation items. The planning board created a subcommittee of how to spell out and what order the high priority, medium priority, low priority action items are. So Clark Caton Hints, myself, Ms. Alonso, members of the planning board all sat down to try to figure out how we can implement this within about a $50,000 budget. That's the work of that. That was the proposal. Budget got adopted the last meeting. We can now move forward with the proposal. This is to implement things that were recommended in the reexamination report.
Thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it. The, the parking?
I didn't see the article you referred about today, so how many tickets or anything, so?
I can't find it. Can you send it to us? I can't. I'm looking now.
Just put in NJ.com and tickets, parking tickets comes up immediately.
It was published today? 'Cause I actually get alerts every time something's published.
This is, this is-
The only one I'm finding is from 17. I'll look, don't worry about it.
Yeah, we're number one.
It's always good to be number one.
I'm torn, you know, because it's really great they're enforcing the parking, you know, as somebody who needs my parking spot on the street, but somebody who's trying to sell their house, it's like, it's not a great advertisement.
Move to close.
Move it.
We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes tonight. We have executive session minutes May 8th, workshop minutes on May 8th, and regular session on May 8th. Have a motion to approve, please.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Consent agendas, Resolution 2018-182, Resolution approving special event applications, Resolution 2018-183, authorizing the appointment to the Asbury Park TV committee, which would be Michelle Gladin with a term expiring 12/31/20. 2018-184, resolution to credit sewer account for 806-16, Block 806, Lot 16, 4 Avenue A. Resolution 2018-185, authorizing a tax tax prepare and deliver estimated 2018 third quarter tax bills. 2018-186, resolution, City of Asbury Park County, Monmouth State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in a 2019 budget for the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, which is a Chapter 159 for a school resource officer. And Resolution 2018-187, resolution approving award contract for regional contribution project for 1114 4th Avenue. Resolution 2019-188 has been moved to the individual resolution. So that's all the consent agendas I have. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2019-188, resolution authorizing the submission of a U.S. Department of Justice Cops Office Stop School Violence Program, 2019 School Violence Prevention Program application. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Will we change that to one?
I already changed it.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-189, resolution approving payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman is abstaining from purchase orders 19-01089 and 19-01422. Have a motion to approve, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2019-190, resolution authorizing the reappointment of Michael Capobianco as the municipal manager and authorizing the execution of appointment greeting, agreement relating thereto.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-199, resolution authorizing the professional services contract to the Rogers Group for Police Accreditation Training Modules. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-192, authorizing Clark Caton Hints to perform various actions from the master plan. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-193, resolution authorizing a contract for improvements to DL-8 Drive. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-194, resolution authorizing the purchase of various IT equipment. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-195, resolution authorizing the purchase of SUVs for code enforcement. Have a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions?
Hold on one second. What number is it?
196, 95.
Okay, I thought you said SUVs.
SUV, sorry.
Okay.
That's a list.
Okay, that's, you scared me. I knew it was one.
195, you say? I don't have a 195.
How many do we have now?
I have a one-
195.
I go from 194 to 196.
How many SUVs we have now?
Oh, there's 195. Okay.
Any further comments or questions?
Yes, I'm just curious, how many we have now?
In code, there's two or three. Are these replaces the sedans?
This, not these.
Yes. This individual SUV of purchase of one shall replace one sedan.
Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
How old is that sedan, Michael?
I think nine years old.
And why does code need an SUV? Like, what do they do that requires an SUV?
SUV can be purchased through the bond ordinance. If not, it has to come out of the regular budget. And SUV is much easier to navigate during inclement weather, during flood events, during snow events. It provides more room for equipment, such as computers that they carry. We've been actually trying to outfit some of the cars with cones and other specialized equipment in case they need it for emergency services. But the most important thing is that the operation of it costs the same amount as gas, costs the same amount as a car. And it provides just more stability and safety as it's a four-wheel drive vehicle.
Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Brother.
That's not an option.
No.
Councilmember Chat, Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Three noes, two yes? The resolution is-
Defeated.
Defeated. Resolution 2019-196, resolution authorizing the extension of emergency medical services billing. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-197, authorize an agreement with Park Mobile for a mobile parking application. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?